Fire District instead of a point seven five mil increase. Now transparently, the proposed rate increases remain on top of the assessments. We're we're not running away from that. But the downward millage rate adjustments gap the revenue necessary to meet the priorities and the needs for service that the commissioners set for the budget. And I know we can't satisfy every concern a citizen may have about the tax increase proposal, although we are willing to try and especially later after the meeting if some Q and Q and A is required. But if someone is ideologically opposed to a tax increase or disagrees with our assumptions and conclusions, I doubt there's anything we can say that will change one's mind. But we respect that and will still try to be respectful and listen to what you have to say and answer questions as we can in the appropriate form. In its simplest form, ninety percent of the revenue the increased property taxes would bring is driven by personnel and support costs. Eighty percent of that ninety percent leverages additional public safety personnel. I hope the citizens try to understand this proposal is public safety directed. So we can have enough first responders and support resources to answer calls for emergencies should they occur. Meanwhile, most all other county services will remain at the status quo. And I know from experience, we will hear different kinds of the following concerns among others. Despite the rule invoked by by the chairman, chances are somebody is going to say, we are senior citizen. We don't want to pay school taxes. I am sure that we will hear raising the sales tax instead of property tax. I'm sure we will hear about tax abatements given to new industries or freezing assessments or providing special exemptions. We will also hear, I think very empathetically, seniors living on true and legitimate fixed incomes who are who are happen to be in cost burdened households. I'm sure we'll hear about landlord concerns regarding raising rental rates for their tenants. And I'm sure we'll hear concerns about the county needs to cut expenses instead of raising taxes. Now tackling the first four tax policy related concerns means that several local stakeholders must agree and the changes would have to be approved by the state. And I would not only speculate, but that it would take two years to accomplish that, even if successful and success isn't guaranteed. Remember too, that when you provide a special interest exemption, abatement, freeze, or any other property tax break, the tax burden is going to be shifted to another group or individuals. Georgia law already has many tax breaks, whether they're property or sales tax related. But if no breaks were in existing law, we wouldn't be sitting here tonight. As the commissioners know, other county elected officials, staff, we all participated in a very rigorous budget process going back to last September. We had focus groups, we've had workshops, meetings and retreats, followed by countless hours devoted to developing strategies, setting KPIs, key performance indicators, and analyzing present and future needs along with our present and future financial condition. We don't look at budgeting or finances very, very lightly. And as I said at the public hearing back in in June, you know, that is why we attempt to hire the very best qualified employees that we can get who have expertise and skill in in all of their key fields. The self evident truth is really that our level of service has not kept up with our past growth for such a large county that we are geographically. We now have Hyundai on the horizon and I'm sure that that's upsetting to some people. But those impacts are already being felt and it's not going to go away. Now, when you compare us to other peer counties, neighboring counties and counties statewide, we do not spend recklessly. Per capita, we are at par with all of those different groups that I've mentioned. But we tend to spend a little bit more on recreation and public works. But we do spend proportionately less on general government and administration, public safety, the judiciary and social services. So most of the categories that that are measured on a per capita spending basis. We work hard at cost efficiency, but lately, in the current inflationary environment, it seems like every step we take forward, we are beaten back two steps. Our building and facilities director, our previous one, who who's now been replaced, but he's been trained, he was transferred over to the airport, reported to me not too long ago that over the last five years, we've increased our our building efficiency, energy efficiency, and we use forty percent kilowatt hours than we did five years ago. But what the heck good is that when Georgia power keeps raising the rates? Okay, so so you know, that's that's something where I'm trying to just, you know, bring it home a little bit. And the twenty twenty-three, and I'm I'm about to conclude. The twenty twenty-three property tax assessment yielded five percent in growth from new development and thirteen percent in increased assessments, which I know is a very grave concern for everybody, including myself. But going forward, reducing the property tax means that we have to flip that narrative. And the way we do it is, well, okay, new housing helps with the growth, the new growth and development. But we don't want to become a bedroom community for Hyundai or Savannah. You know, that moves the tax needle or the tax rate needle in the wrong direction. And in my opinion, like I've stated in the budget message that I prepare for the budget document for at least the last ten years, our publicly funded economic development organizations need to work harder to recruit new commercial and industrial growth to the county that pays its share. And that's what gives residential taxpayers real relief, real relief. That's the way the economics of local government finance works. You know, I read something in the paper recently about Columbia County. And oh, my God, yes, Columbia County has a very low tax rate. But they're also a wealthy county. We're not a wealthy county. We have a lot of people who are wealthy, but in the aggregate, we are not a wealthy county. But we aspire to be. We aspire to create create wealth with new businesses, our existing businesses. Even our economic development organizations need to help support our existing businesses become stronger, not just focus on new new industries and and new commerce. So ultimately, what I have to say and conclude by, I'm not going to do the Bill Clinton, I feel your pain, that's kind of hokey. And I don't I don't even think I could talk like him. But but in any in any event, I can guarantee you that the commissioners or myself or any other elected county official or leader, appointed leader in our county, do not take what we're doing lightly. We are doing it with a great deal of thought. It may, if if approved, produce some short term pain. But we think if all of the things are done right thereafter over the next several years, we can start rolling back these taxes if we've got good tax policy strategies. And yeah, that's funny, isn't it? Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if if we if we'd like our sheriff or public safety director to make any comments, only if they so choose or wait till later, but I'll yield the floor back to you.
Sheriff Brown, would you like to make a few comments? And if you do not mind, because we do have twenty signed up to speak, we will put it on a five minute timer.
Sheriff, I'll make it real quick. Everyone, you know, I love you in this room, but I said at the very beginning of two thousand seventeen, this was happening. There was a time in this county where nothing was done for a long, long time. Can't blame these gentlemen or these finance people for what's going on right now. It did not happen overnight. It transpired over several years of someone not doing anything. Doing more than less, I think is a term that was used. Those days are over. Can't do that anymore. You don't trust these people right here, believe that they've got a game plan going forward and make us work. I'm gonna hurt some chump or whatever in the county manager. My thing with the Z is working together, we think a lot of things work. Y'all trust me to serve you and protect this county, and I've got to have to. You don't find the same type of employees nowadays as you used to. You got to bring something to the plate to keep and retain them. If not, they're going to go to the porch and go to work for thirty three dollars an hour. We can't pay them thirty three dollars an hour. Bottom line is that you can check everything we're doing at the sheriff's office and throughout county government are trying to lay out. You'll see a plane that is going forward, will work. The powder and stream is not going to fix. Now, we're here to hear y'all, your concerns, and we'll make my notes where I can talk to y'all. Y'all coming to talk to me. I know we're late. I will explain every aspect of what we're doing with money I've been doing with sheriff's office. As all of the other parks and the parks and so forth, collective officials and county, we like to claim. And transparent, I will let you know exactly what I'm doing, what I'm doing. Always have been. So if y'all got any questions, maybe later on I'll be here to answer, okay? One thing I will say, every one of y'all will get a chance to come and food in there. I get cursed at enough by the public. Let's let's don't do none of that tonight because I don't have to wait on this roll that I can remove. Please don't curse. Just come up here and say what you got to say. Get angry, it's really easy to do that, people get angry every day. So I may ask you to keep it very professional, say what you got to say. I know that you should have wanted, and I get that you want.
Thank you, Sheriff. Going to call next, Mr. Ted Wynn, Public Safety Director. He'll come up, say a few words.
I would say I agree with anything the sheriff said except to speak to you from a fire and EMS perspective. Calls for service have simply outpaced our ability to handle those calls for service. People are staying at home longer in their homes. Our fire department runs continuous calls for service, dealing with picking someone off the floor. They can't get up. EMS working out of two stations in a county this size is unacceptable. It's unacceptable. Most of what Mr. Couch spoke about, of our increase in our aspect of public safety, is EMS. And we will have four stations. Probably by January thirtieth, somewhere in that range, so we will have four stations, currently have two. If we don't get to you within forty-five minutes and you're not breathing, you die. It's as simple as that. We're trying to narrow that window, we're trying to narrow that timeframe and put boots on the ground in your house in a timely manner in order to save lives. I don't like a tax increase any more than you do, but this is necessary. This is necessary from a fire and EMS perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn. Now, to each of you, we're going to start the public hearing, propose property tax increase. You do not have to use the total five minutes if you said what you want to say. However, I said the stopping point would be at eight thirty. If it if it's eight twenty-one and the rest of y'all, everybody has spoken that signed up, then that's when we will stop the meeting. The folks that have signed up are the ones that's going to speak tonight. You still have two opportunities to come speak. We will not add anyone tonight. Um, so having said that, I will now ask for a motion to open the floor to public comments.
Second.
Have a motion second in the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion shall attend. Unanimous approval if you're called the first citizen, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Mr. Couch, Missy White. I come to you tonight because I've been getting a lot of questions, phone calls, texts, I'm sure y'all have as well. As being a part of the Republican Party here and also one of the more outspoken citizens of this county, that has put my phone number and my email address out there and and people like to contact me. And so I've done a lot of listening. And it is my hope that here tonight that each of you will do the same. I realized that last Tuesday at the end of the commissioners meeting, it was shared that y'all did not want to hear over and over and over from people that they do not want their property taxes increased. Well, I've been hearing that over this past week since that meeting. And people want their voices heard. And there are a lot of people in this room that aren't elegant speakers. And they want to stand before you and just tell you from their heart that they can't afford these tax increases. And two of the questions that have been presented to me is, has this board of commissioners chosen corporations over the citizens of this county? And they also want to know if their voices are going to be heard or if the decision has already been made. And those are two tough questions to answer. Because from appearances, it does seem that corporations have been chosen over citizens. That these tax abatements that Mr. Couch mentioned are on the forefront of their minds. They didn't vote for these corporations to come, but they feel like they're having to pay for them. Now, I've gone totally off script here. I had prepared statements. But I wanted to speak about the reframing of this argument that if we are against these taxes, that we're against law enforcement and public safety. I've known Sheriff Brown for a long time and Mr. Wynn, they're two people that I respect highly. I've spoken with them on different occasions about different ways to to work through this. Because when somebody is a conservative and do not want their taxes raised, especially when the budget has been increased by over ten million dollars, that does not mean we're against public safety. It does not mean we want the sheriff's department shut down, that we don't want EMS to come to our house if we have a medical condition, that we don't want the fire department to come if we have a fire. These are services that we know are important to this county. But when you do the math and you look at the ten dollar, ten million dollar increase and you see that two million is going to public safety and two million has been set aside for an eight percent increase for employees, that there's still six million dollars out there that's not totally accounted for. Now, it's been one of my calls for over six weeks now is for us to see the comprehensive budget. I still hope that happens before this tax increase is passed by y'all and that we can see exactly where this money is going. And I want to encourage you to be as transparent as you can with these citizens. They are upset because they didn't know this was coming. Yes, y'all have known it since September, since your retreat earlier this year. But these citizens are having to deal with the reality. They haven't been able to plan for six months of how they can save additional money so that they can pay these increases. So I implore you, especially those that ran on a conservative platform, to be courageous, to stand up for the citizens of Bullock County, to do what is right. It is not too late to decrease spending. There are ways, there are alternatives, there are different things that can be done as a county. I've seen tremendous growth in my lifetime in this county. I remember when Highway eighty was two lanes, y'all seen that. And we've seen a lot of growth even with our physical responsibility and we can continue to see that. So choose the citizens of Bullock County. I implore you to listen here tonight to everything that is said. Thank you.
Bruce Simon.
Good evening, Commissioner, everyone. A couple of things he's touched on is, you know, we all know the growth is really is what's getting us from the industry. The how much of my understanding, sixty was sixty percent the taxpayers, the landowners, property tax is actually carrying the burden of the county. The other is commercial. Somehow we got to flip that. You know, commercial is supposed to be toting most of the county, you know, and not not the taxpayers. Yes, we got to pay our fair share. We got all these amendments in place. I don't know if we can rescind any of them, it's very doubtful. But I propose you guys do not, Bullock County, have any more abatements for any more industry. Enough's enough. We can't, we can't do it no more. All right, I've been asking for the tax land type, the land tax value, valuation freeze now for what? Four months, five months, I've been bringing it up. I still hadn't heard nothing about that, help the citizens. It's steady going up, taxes being, a land's been revalued due to due to the growth. It's sad. And now you want to try to go up on the the millage rate as well on top of all, everything that's going up. I'm I'm with Noah Brown, I'm with everything, I'm for public safety. But we need to, unlike him, we need to sit down and try other ways to do it before we automatically put this into play. Just it's just doesn't make good sense just to keep throwing at it, especially when we've got all these abatements out there. I mean, I I was reading in the last week, I saw the abatements that were given to these industries. And my thought, it's almost criminal to the citizens what he gave away to these industries to make us pay for because of the growth. I just, y'all, so I'm asking you guys to look hard and deep before you pass this millage rate. Try to find alternative ways. You know, I I don't know what else to say. I mean, this, you know, I talk to people in the county. The way our taxes evaluation keeps going up, now the millage rate is going to top of it. We have no valuation freeze. We we have no no breaks hardly at sixty-five. We have, you know, the school boards fixing, you know, probably go up. You fixing to have people lose their home, lose their property. I'm telling you, we at that point. We at that point. So y'all, please look at it deep and hard before y'all vote this in. You know, and I would like as well, and everyone else would like to see the budget before it's approved. I mean, before this goes in, it's just, I mean, I hadn't seen it nowhere, I can't find it nowhere. You know, where's this going? So are you going to make that public?
Please. Ms. King, I knew we had the preliminary budget with the budget hearing. Uh, there was information available on the website, is that correct? And then I think you're, I think you're trying to finish the final approved budget with the ebook, right?
Yes, I'm I'm still working on the final document. I am so close to having it done. Um, I'm hoping I can probably have most of it, all of everything except the capital part posted by probably Wednesday. And it will be on the website.
But during the but for prior to the budget hearing, we did put out a tentative budget that's been posted, right?
Yes, and it is still up there and it's got it's got summarized numbers.
Yeah, and I don't believe any of the numbers or assumptions have changed, right?
No, the numbers have not changed.
But just summarize, it's just a
Right, yeah, this is Right.
But again, please look at this hard. Another thing I want to ask everybody sitting there, the abatements needs to come off the tables from this day forward. They need to come off the table. We gave away the farm down here. We gave away the farm. And that's why we sitting right here today. And you made, Mr. Couch, you made a comment, I really stand behind, we don't want to be a bedroom community. But he's all this Hyundai and all that. And that's another thing when we go to this, no, we don't, because that just costs us extra money. So that's something we need to keep in my back of my mind, Mr. Couch's comment, when we go to these these people want to cut up our property and start building houses on it. So I thank you for that comment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Joan Price Aiden.
Question for you in the back, can you hear? Everybody can hear. All right, good, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Couch and Miss Whitney, Mincy White, excuse me. My name is Joan Price Aiden and I live in the Iron Gate Community. I come to you as a conservative Republican with a concern that a county that is at least two thirds majority Republican is about to pass a massive tax increase on the back of its property owners. Our community has attracted people over the years that saw Bullock County as a desirable place to live because of its lower property taxes, conservative values and strong community. While growth can be important for a community, those that benefit benefit most from that growth must also be a stakeholder in paying for that growth. There have been, as has been previously mentioned, several tax abatements given to corporations that can fully afford to pay their share. But they have been given a pass at a hundred percent for over ten years and fifty percent for five years. This means that over eighty thousand citizens of Bullock County will pay for the additional few thousand jobs and employees that will come here along with the infrastructures for the corporations. The sacrifice of that many people for a few is a difficult pill to swallow. I would like to ask my fellow citizens that are here tonight and are against this tax increase to please stand up and show your solidarity in asking you not to pass these tax increases. Thank you. Each of you is a stakeholder in this community and sacrificially giving your time and resources to serve this commission. And we're grateful. Fight for us for opposing this tax increase. It seems from public comments from the chairman that complaints from citizens are not well received. And instead, we are being asked to find solutions to a problem that we did not create. We ask you as the commissioners to stand with us and decrease the spending and not raise our taxes. I also ask that a focus going forward is to inform citizens of this county about the homestead exempt, tax, homestead exemptions that they can utilize to lower their property tax burden. My husband and I are just finding out about this now, we've lived here for over ten years. Approximately only one third of those that qualify for exemption actually utilize it. We put up signs that pray that praise what the county is doing with the T-Spot staller. So why not use resources to inform citizens that they have an avenue to lower their taxes? Each of you is the last piece of protection we have for preventing these taxes from increasing. We have let our voices and concerns be heard. And now it is time for you to do what is best for over eighty thousand citizens and not just what is best for select corporations or new jobs. Thank you for your time.
Cassandra Michael.
I'm going to fix it for the little people. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Cassandra Michael and I live in the Pine Mount subdivision. I've received a lot of feedback from the community and it's clear that the citizens are questioning the direction that the county is going and if actions being taken are really for the benefit of Bullock County residents. People are simply asking for this body to do what is right for our county and increasing property taxes is not what we feel is right. You would already be getting additional tax revenue based on the property value increases that have already been implemented. Based on the total tax digest and the current millage rates, the county after the twenty twenty-three value increases of nineteen percent would receive five million dollars more in property tax revenue. Your total twenty twenty-three budget asks for ten million dollars more. Split the difference with the taxpayers and just keep the current millage rate. You giving citizens a double whammy with the millage rate increase as well. I cannot help but wonder if the gifts to the several I cannot help but wonder if the gifts to the several corporations are really worth the additional financial burdens upon all of our neighbors. It has been said that this increases the cost of growth by Mr. Couch. But Bryan County, the county that's actually getting the Hyundai plant, decreased its millage rate for twenty-twenty-three. In fact, Bryan County decreased its millage rate for the last six years. These increases will hurt many citizens in the room, as I'm sure you'll hear overwhelmingly tonight, as they all just stood. Commissioners, while you have known that the county was gonna increase spending and increase property taxes, the citizens that you represent, we did not. I consider myself a well-informed and politically active citizen, but even for me, it's too late. I've researched and compiled the data for numerous subdivisions and tons of houses since the proposed millage rates were released. The numbers show that our citizens will be greatly impacted. My own subdivision, Pine Mount, which is represented by Commissioner Simmons and Mosley, will be experiencing a forty-eight percent increase from twenty, from their twenty-twenty-two property taxes. This is an unrealistic expectation for hard-working Americans to take on with very little notice. Our taxes are due December first. This is by far the largest increase that I've seen for the numerous subdivisions that I've calculated. A nearby subdivision, Pebblestone, with very similar average home values, only has a twenty-eight percent increase. While this is a far cry from the forty-eight percent average increase my neighbors just minutes away will experience, it's gonna have a real impact upon their mortgages and their finances. In my opinion, Pebble, Pebblestone is a much nicer subdivision than mine, so either my neighborhood Pine Mount is way overvalued, or Pebblestone is way undervalued. It makes no sense that there's a twenty percent difference in the taxes for sub, subdivisions that are similar and just down the road from each other. I can only imagine how a person who is not able to invest the kind of time I have can be expected to know that they should have appealed their increase to their property values, as all of my neighbors should have, have to reflect another similar subdivision down the road. A decision will be made in just a few weeks that will impact over eighty thousand citizens, whether directly as a property owner or indirectly as a renter. We are already experiencing increasing rental costs, which are expected to continue to rise because of the decisions each of you have made and will make. I know many of you ran on a conservative platform and to serve the best interests of the community. I do implore you to put, that now the time, now is the time to put that into action. I'm concerned about what happens to this county if the economy takes a turn for the worse, as many financial projections seem to indicate. Will our millage rate continue to be increased to fulfill the additional commitments that an increased budget will lead to? We have a large group that made Bullock County their home long before Hyundai was even a vision, and we owe that, owe it to them to not be sacrificed at the cost of new growth, control the spending, and please cut the millage rate. Thank you.
Christine Lemon.
Hello, my name is Christina Lemon. I'm a resident of Bullock County, I've been here for twenty-five years, and I've only spoken at this commissioner meeting one time, this is my second time. So I'm not often complaining. But, um, anyway, I've been here for twenty-five years, and it looks like some of you I recognize for almost as long. Uh, my father and I are facing this increase in our property taxes. My father's on a fixed income, I'm on a single income. We're looking at a combined, uh, increase of over a thousand dollars for our property. What all we've been through in the last three years, this is a gut punch. We've looked, we, we've got an out-of-control corrupt federal government. We've been through a plandemic, we're now looking at skyrocketing inflation. I don't know how much more we're gonna be able to take. There's no relief valve for this. Anyway, I'm gonna give you a little bit different, uh, perspective. Um, I was listening to some young people. They're in twenty-something year old, they're, um, out of high school now, they're thinking about getting land. Uh, and I overheard the conversation, I was stunned. They were talking about two of them going in together to purchase land and put a camper on it. That's what our young people are facing right now. Their dream of home ownership is pretty much gone. They will not be able to, to withstand the kind of increases, uh, that we're talking about. The other couple, uh, they're newly engaged, they were talking about getting a camper and putting it on their parents' property. They couldn't even afford to do that. They're living in a low-income apartment complex with questionable safety. And I think that we owe it to our young people and to the young families to help support them. They're not getting any support elsewhere. And I'm not opposed to taxes, what I'm opposed to is the significant increase that, no, we have not planned for it. We're getting hit left and right with everything going up. So anyway, I hope that, um, I hope that you will give it some, uh, additional consideration. Think about our young people, our hard-working people, they're gonna bear the brunt of this. And if we do go with this increased tax on all of us, it brings us one step closer, and I'll use the phrase, "You will own nothing and be happy." I hope that's not we're gonna be, what we're gonna be told eventually. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Connor, for your attentiveness, because there's a lot of averted eyes here tonight. And let me tell you how discouraging that is. Just look at us, we want, we want just to be able to express ourselves. Thank you for your respect.
Lynn Fatika.
Good evening, Chairman Thompson, Commissioners, County Manager Tom Couch, Ms. Mincy White. My name is Lynn Fatika, you've known me, I've normally come up here and speak on behalf of the Democratic Party. Today I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Um, I live in two oh one Canterbury in, in Statesboro. Uh, many of the fellow residents have voiced and will voice their concern over the tax increase, uh, whether it is through their property appraisal or their homes, uh, or the, the proposed millage increase. We understand growth in the southern part of the county to support the new Hyundai plant and the supporting industries for it. We understand that a majority of the increase is to support public safety and the infrastructure such as water, sewer lines, treatment plants, and need to support the growth. I, for one, can understand especially the need for public safety. I retired as the Director of Public Safety. So I am a big proponent of public safety, and I know how critical it is to the citizens. There's been a discussion how to raise the needed funds to pay for these items. An increase in millage, one percent increase in the county sales tax and others. One area that we really haven't looked at, there's actually a couple areas that I'm gonna propose. Why did we get put in this position? Yes, it's the building of the new plant and what we have to do to support it on the southern part. Bryan County, as Cassandra mentioned, by the way, is not going to increase their taxes, according to her tax officials there that I contacted. We all welcome the new job opportunities in the area, however, the state has not allocated any funding for us. And I'm aware of to deal with the issues that we're gonna experience with the growth. I hear many times that the state has over six billion dollars in surplus in the state treasury. Why cannot we petition the governor via an executive order or any means possible that he has to commit to the county ten to fifteen million dollars we need to pay for these costs? Yes, we might be kicking the can down the road for a year or two, but that will allow the county to see the true impact of our, what the true impact will be to our area. I'm sure we can ask Speaker John Burns, who covers part of our county, Senator Billy Hickman, as well as state legislators Lehman Franklin and Butch Parrish, along with the local leaders to have this conversation with the governor. If this isn't possible, what about a bond issue, a low-interest bond issue with the state to cover this ten million dollars to where we could get the loan from the state and don't have to start paying it back? And Mr. Couch, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, because you're the expert. Uh, once we start ge, uh, generating revenues from these businesses. So those are some areas, you know, I, I don't like to come up here and complain, I like to come up here and propose solutions. Uh, and I'm just as concerned as the other senior citizens, because I'm a senior citizen. My, I don't want my retirement going to paying more taxes, and that's one of the reasons I moved here was the, the low cost of living, especially in taxes. These ideas may be feasible, may be worth looking at. The other issues are, Tom, can we look at a TIF, can we look at a JED-Z for these businesses, even though we're not gonna be getting taxes directly from those corporations, we can tax their employees one to two percent, if that's at all possible. Uh, I thank you, I appreciate you, and I think we all need to work together so we can build a better Bullock County. Appreciate it.
David Reed.
Good evening, County Commissioners. I got, my point is, my tax money is supporting these factories, and they ain't bought the county a bicycle, muscle, that's a fire truck. You tell me what they bought. Then my tax money's got to support them and everything else. You know, that's a big deal with me. Because they come in here tax-free, you know, making billions of dollars, and I'm just making thousands of dollars a year. You know, that's a bad break. Because I like to know what Briggs and all them bought the county before. Because, I, I mean, they can all get together and buy EMS vehicle, fire truck, sheriff car, or new guns for the sheriff, new vests, but they ain't bought nothing. I mean, our tax money is buying. I mean, they could build a substation for the sheriff's department, you know, all get together and build one toward sixteen. Then, um, then I find there ought to be an impact fee with all this building. I mean, something's got to give somewhere. I mean, y'all ain't gonna run no sewer lines, uh, water lines by my house. You know, on forty-six. I mean, y'all trying to cater to these people, you know, making a fortune down there. Because to me, it's a big problem, it's the taxpayers. Because, um, these companies making millions of dollars in tax savings. That's about all I got to say, but, um, but nine-one-one needs to get better, you know. Y'all going to tax increase, because, because you need EMS and the fire department every fire station. In Stilson, need one in Lee Field, Cretto, Bay Branch, Nevels. Because it'd be your family have it wrecked on I-16, you gotta wait twenty minutes, you know, to get out the car. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Ronnie Daniels.
Yeah, um, this, this tax increase, you know, that, it's hitting the senior citizens. Where they, it's hitting them hard, property taxes, this, this ridiculous. It's like you're all trying to push the senior citizens out of Bullock County. And there's, there's other ways around this, like this gentleman here just said. These companies that you're giving all these tax breaks to, what have they done? What, what have they done? They, what, what if they gave the fire department? What if they gave the police department, sheriff's department, nothing? But they'll get a tax break for ten years, and then after ten years, y'all say, well, we'll give you fifty percent. We, we won't charge you half of it. And they're not doing nothing for us. You know, I can tell you some stories about this one company here in this county that y'all think, everybody thinks was the greatest. I'm here to tell you, they're not. They're not the greatest. Please look after your senior citizens. Think about what you're doing to them. This tax, you know, it hurts, it hurts bad. Just think about that, that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Jane Sack.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I had a canned speech, but I'm not going to read it to you. This is gonna come from the heart. This is about the baby boomers. Mr. Thompson, you're a baby boomer, we're about the same age. I don't know about the rest of you, but, um, I have a lot of friends. I have a lot of widow ladies in Statesboro. I have widow ladies that live in the city. They will also be incurred with the county taxes. They're crying right now, I have telephone calls from my friends, Jane, what am I gonna do? This is an extra eight hundred ninety-eight dollars that I'm gonna have to pay for. I just can't do it, I'm on the fixed income. My husband was ill for ten years, had Parkinson's, I'm still paying medical expenses. It's hurting, it's hurting these people. I know, Mr. Couch, you said, yeah, we were gonna hear about these senior citizens, I'm a senior citizen. Luckily, I've got good health insurance, I retired from the state of Georgia. But I got a lot of friends who didn't retire from the state of Georgia. They were stay-at-home mamas, they were able to take care of the youngins. Right now, several of them are taking care of the grand youngins with no extra income. It's hurting these people. And I'm listening to them, I'm a retired social worker. I'm trying to help them plan. I have one friend that will be paying the county and the city, and she's had a friend to come and move in with her because the other friend was losing her home. This is reality. This is us baby boomers, y'all. There's a lot to be said out there. Lot of stuff that's not being utilized or thought about for these, for these folks, we're living longer. It's gonna happen to y'all too. You got family, you got mamas, you got dads, you got aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, that older than you are, it's not easy. But that's all I have to say, thank you.
Bill Emlee.
Good evening, Commissioner, County members, all of us here, hope you're having a good day. My name is Bill Emlee, my residence is ninety-eighteen Oakfield Drive in Statesboro, Georgia. I am here to speak on behalf of the Bullock County Senior Property Owners, which number in excess of fourteen hundred and seventy. So I am the elected representative of greater than fourteen hundred and seventy of our senior citizens here in Bullock County. I am one of four, there are four of us. Again, we come before you in opposition to the Bullock County Board of Commissioners tentative adopted millage rate increase in property taxes. The county assistant and general manager have reported that the property tax increase is needed to catch up in providing basic levels of service after inflation. Also for years of delaying hiring, also overdue renovations, and to prepare the county for future growth. Previously, the Board of Commissioners, Assistant and General Manager were asked this simple question. What are we doing differently in the twenty-twenty-four budget than we haven't been doing in the previous budget? Because the previous budgets were constantly raising property taxes to fund our county. I know in my budget of my home, in order. I know in my budget, in my home, in order to lower my expenditures, being my money coming into my house, I have to cut my budget, or I have to cut out things I'm spending money on. Frivolous things. Do we set aside what is essential services like fire, police, EMS? Are we paying for the essential services first? Or paying being that we're bringing in funds to support that? And then if we have extra budgets that we need to do, extra paving or extra project, then we'll go after those. Commissioners held an open meeting in opposition to the proposed 2024 property tax. We're clearly present. Commissioners clearly chose to ignore the needs and expectations of the people by their continuous property tax approval. When county departments are requesting additional resources, there isn't enough funds in the general budget. Hence, we are playing catch-up. We don't have enough money to fund. How many more sheriffs do we need? When I talk to the sheriff's department or office and ask, "Well, how much? How many sheriffs are you requesting in one calendar year?" When you go back and look, well, the project that now the county has agreed to supply all the SROs in the schools. Now, Mr. Couch, Mr. Thompson, both said that the school and the county are two totally separate funding issues entities. Well, I was told by, or informed by Mr. Couch, that a SRO costs $104,000 each. The schools are kicking in $54,000 and change. So the question is, is where is the other $54,000 coming from? Is it coming from the general fund? If it's coming from the general fund, then the county taxpayers are paying for this, which means that the county funds, the general fund, and the school funds are sharing? Is the county sharing expenses with the schools? And then the other question lies is that we're also providing an SRO to a public, to a private school. With the reporting of the Board of Education saying they, they have a surplus of money in their budget. So why isn't the school system paying for it? The SROs. I agree, the SROs are needed in the school. That's not the debate. The debate is who's paying for this? And that's what all these people are saying. They're looking at their budgets. They only have so many dollars a month, a quarter, a year. But when we turn around and look at our total life savings is a negative 59%, how can you sit there and raise, give a pay raise to the county employees of 8%? And these people sitting here going into their life savings deeper and deeper into debt? It doesn't add up, and it doesn't hold water. Thanks very much. I appreciate talking with you. Thank you.
Glenn Olson. Carlton Crenshaw.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm new to Bullock County. But I want to give credit where credit's due. Uh, I'm sure you men, many of you know personally a very good friend of mine from my childhood. And I think most of you people that have been here in a period of time knew Ralph Andrews of Andrews Cleaners. And Ralph came home from Korea when I was about 11. And I had many, many questions that my father had never had time to answer. And I hung around Ralph because he treated me like a puppy that had been picked up off the side of the road. And he answered tons of questions and never got bent out of shape in doing so. And one of the reasons I was excited about coming to Bullock County is because after losing Ralph for maybe 40 or 45 years of my life, um, I discovered he lived over here. And he and Joyce offered to take my wife, my daughter, my mother-in-law, and he took us on a full tour of Bullock County. And we had looked all over Springfield and Puller. Our children live in Effingham County. And we were trying to move this way because our children told us this is where we ought to be living, closer to them. We lived in Warner Robins. So all of our looking didn't pan out until the Lord, and we prayed to Him this morning, or this evening, first thing. And we asked Him to oversee what this meeting is all about. Am I wrong? Am I wrong? Who owns everything in Bullock County? It's the Lord God Almighty. He made all of it. He, He is the author of every life that's represented here tonight. He created us all before the foundations of the earth, and He gave us a book to guide and lead us. And He still owns every penny, every dollar that we've been talking about tonight. And I believe that America that I love and served my country and helped cry about the loss of life of the DOD men that I went to school with, high school, college, and worked with. And I don't believe any of them died thinking it's okay to, to give people who didn't make the sacrifice militarily, but loved America. And I plead on their behalf, the deceased people that gave their lives. My, my entire male family served World War II. My uncle on my wife's, uh, side was left for dead in Korea when the Vietnam had shot him twice, and he played dead. And to live to that, only to go get another Purple Heart before the war was over. And I, and I share that with everybody here because everything that I've heard tonight, I believe is absolutely the truth. But I also believe that I'm, if you ever see me out in public and watch me bend over and pick up something in the parking lot, I pick up pennies because it says on the penny, "In God we trust." And I take those pennies and I put them in an offering plate in the churches I attend, knowing that God can do miracles with one penny. He did it with the, the pence of the widow lady. And I hope that, and I know it's a tough job. I know, I spent 63 years working before I retired. And time flies by when you're retired. But in those 63 years, 60 of them were in management. And in management, I know that if there's, if there are any problems, it, it belongs to management, doesn't employ, employee, it doesn't, uh, it's not a responsibility of employees, is what I'm trying to say. So I think that you've heard the heart pleading from the, the county residents. I'm one of them now. I don't like to see taxes go up. But let me tell you, when I first got here, I went to a city council meeting. I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to the audience here. I went to a city council meeting just to see what was going on, just like I've done coming to this, the commission's meeting tonight. And Pembroke had just gone through the tornado over there. But the news media had announced that FEMA wasn't going to do anything for Pembroke. And I heard the city council say they had a $5 million reserve when I went to that meeting. And they voted not to help Pembroke, their neighbor, my new neighbors, that had been devastated by a tornado. And I believe that if, if management of Bullock County gets together, there probably a lot of people would pull on the same end of the rope to make Bullock County the strongest, best place to be if you're coming this way from any direction. And I thank you for your time.
Kathy Todd.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and commissioners, Mr. Couch. I have a little bit different take, though I agree with many of the comments that have been made. We're 30 years plus residents of Bullock County. But I've spent 40 years of my life in local government. So I appreciate Ms. King's work in the finance department, Mr. Couch's work. I was in that position myself up until a year ago, where juggling a, a, a local government budget is not an easy task. Keeping qualified personnel, maintaining those qualified personnel, expanding services that are needed, especially in public safety. And we've seen public safety be hit and personnel be harder and harder to keep. So I'm sympathetic to all of those things. And I want to say that I understand the difficulty it is to juggle and to create a budget that is balanced, that is workable, and that maintains service levels. Because the last thing any local government wants to do is decrease their service level, levels to their constituents. So in looking at things, I have more questions than I have comments. And maybe these are areas that the county manager and the finance director can go back and take a look at and then readdress with the commissioners. And one of those questions is, in, in the $10.9 million revenue increase, 10.3 of it is in taxes. Now, taxes is a huge burden on the taxpayers. It makes up 78% of the general operating budget. 78% of your revenues come from the backs of the property tax owners. That's a huge chunk. And so if property taxes decrease, you're placing yourself at risk revenue-wise in the future of the county's financial stability. So that's one point I wanted to make. The other thing is there's, out of the 10.9, 10.3 of it is out of property tax. And in looking at the expenditure side of the budget, I had noticed that there was a $9.4 million in general fund expenditures. But in the summary that is online, I only found justification for 5.7 million of that. So my question originally was, where's the other 3.7 million going in the general fund? And lo and behold, I noticed the non-departmental budget in the general fund that last year had $250,000. And I understand raising the contingency because you have to do that. You have to be responsible. But there was $1.9 million going to an inter-fund, interdepartmental charges, not explained. There was $1 million going to capital outlay, also not explained. That's $2.9 million. My question is, out of the value of the mill, how many mills or percentage of mills does that equate to? So maybe taking a look at those kinds of things. 8.8% increase in salaries, that's pretty generous. Pretty generous. In all the years in local government finance, I don't think I've ever seen an 8% increase in salaries. In fact, that was one of the things we tried to be the most conservative, but yet being fair in retaining our employees. So again, I know personnel costs are the most expensive piece to your budget. I know that it's more than salaries, it's benefits that go hand in hand with that. So I am sensitive to it, but again, it's just an area to take a look at and say, maybe are we being a little too generous at a time where things are already very tight on the constituents? The last point I wanted to make was on the rural fire fund. That millage rate increase, for those of us that live in rural Bullock County, is 52.3%. And again, I understand most of it's going to salary increases, but there's $176,000 that's, and that's, that's explained. The balance of the $436,000 increase in that budget from last year to this year is not explained. So my question is, where's the other $250,000 in the rural fire fund going? As a taxpayer, I think we need to know those questions and/or look at those areas as potentials to be cut and reduced. And again, going back to the value of the mill, what is that impact on the millage rate? So with that, I'm going to close and just say, um, I hope you'll take those things into consideration. Revenues, you have to balance your revenue. That's by law, you have to bu, balance your budget. Um, and so, um, the only place you can look is to cut the expenditures. Thank you.
Lucia Hurst.
Thank you. This is a little last minute, so I apologize. I'm not as put together as everybody else. I bought my property many, many years ago as a student of Georgia Southern. And I have seen the increase each year, um, but never to the extent that it is now. 33% is a lot these days. Um, as a stay-at-home mother, we rely on one household income, and it is very unlikely to be a sustainable expense. Um, I would like to talk about these factories at Interstate I-16, just like many others. Um, and the fact that they are getting this huge tax break, which is technically unconstitutional under the Georgia Constitution, Article 7, Paragraph 3. Um, we, as citizens, are entitled to our reprimandum, our vote. Uh, we are entitled to vote for such an increase, um, millions of dollars in ad valorem tax over 10 years, or to end of lease, which who knows how long these leases might last, for factories, only supplying a few hundred jo, a few hundred jobs each. Why didn't I get the right to vote? I would like to ask the Board of Elections, of Elections, exactly, which only has three people. Um, why did I, did, why did I not get my constitutional referendum? Um, could it be that there are interested people? People that are compromised on the Board of Elections and not allowing the vote to go to the citizens? Could it be that we have a GOP chairman on that board? Um, blocking my right to vote? And why don't the locals get the relief of these new factories? These new factories that don't care about our county, don't care about our people? They just care about a location to another factory? If I was to vote, I would say absolutely not. In that we need some people that, uh, have some better negotiating skills in place. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Raymond Harris, Sr.
Thank you, commissioners, for having me here today. I'm a military veteran, so I don't pay tax. So I don't feel the same pain they do. But as a veteran, I raised my right hand to say I was standing the gap for these people back here. Because what I see, what I see is when I go out my door in the morning, I got an 80, 89-year-old grandmother, and she walks back and forth getting her exercise. And I said, "Mother Lyons, you doing all right today?" She said, "Fine." I said, "You know they're raising you guys' taxes 35%, 33%, whatever it was?" She was like, "No, sir. Go speak for me." And that's what I am doing. Some of your citizens, and I, and you say pain. Every morning, I wake up with the pain of serving my country. I'm 100% disabled. Even though I can stand up and walk, I'm doing good today. But you got to remember, your citizens are going to feel the pain, that 50, that 60, that $600 a year that they're going to come out their pocket and paying? They're not raising income. I get a disability check that gives me a 3% raise every year. Now, you guys know there's been a 10% inflation on us, but we get 3%. That's 7% we're not getting. And that's not here nor there, but what I'm saying is, let's be fair to the citizens of Bullock County, because I love this county. I really do, and I love the people in it. I'm one percent being a veteran, I'm one percent, or less than one percent, being a black Republican. So going against the grain is nothing new for me. But I just asked you guys to cut the pork. If there's, and I've worked for Brown, I've worked for the Sheriff's Department, loved it. And would do it again if he said, "Raymond, I need you for five months just to help me." I would do it. But what I'm saying is, and it is hard to keep people at their prison. It is hard to keep people in laws for them, especially when we being demonized the way they're doing in the media today. So you guys got to understand, let's just look at this, this tax increase. I'm not saying don't give them what they need. Give them what they need to do their job. Because I've been on the floor with my heart stopped before. The EMS got there within them four minutes. So I know it's needed. But if there's any pork in there that we don't need right now, like light fixtures, light bulbs, stuff we can push down the road a little bit, let's do that. That's all I'm asking. And I appreciate you guys' time.
I think this is Mr. and Mrs. John Jervis. Dr. Beth Williams.
Good evening, Chairman, County Commissioners. My name is Dr. Elizabeth Rushing-Williams. I wrote the article in the newspaper that so many of you have referenced. So first I want to point out my maiden name. My maiden name is Rushing. My family has been here since the inception of Bullock County. Before that, my family was Howard. I briefly moved to Columbia County to support the Department of Defense there, and I came back here to raise a family. We moved back in 2021, and I quickly saw that we were paying more taxes in Bullock County than we were in Columbia County, even though we were getting significantly more services in Columbia County. I'm not talking about parks, I'm not talking about the trivial things. We have East Ploes, we have other sploes taxes that help with that. I'm talking about just services in general, potholes in the road and such. Less than two weeks ago, the county auctioned off property for people not being able to pay property taxes. That is with the current millage rate. We're talking about increasing the property taxes by over forty percent at a time of a global pandemic, inflation, and high interest rates. The thirteen percent assessed tax increase was just within the last few months, and this is including, in addition, twenty-eight percent county and sixteen percent Bullock County schools. So again, according to this documentation, you're asking for an additional seven to ten million dollars. It's not clear. There hasn't been clear documentation on what is actually being done until tonight. And even that, there's a gap. I'm an engineer by trade. I focus on data. Again, there's been unclear communication, unclear information on millage rate, but we do know that Bryan County is paying less, and they are the ones building the Hyundai plant. Sorry, I wasn't really prepared to speak. So we voted for you guys to support us, and we asked that you listen to us. I'm standing as a minority Democrat in front of majority Republicans, and I'm asking you not to increase our tax rate. We act like there's nothing between zero percent and forty-plus percent. There's a big number in between there. It can be ten percent, it can be fifteen percent, it can be less than that. But it doesn't have to be over forty percent. And we're asking you to be our voice and take what we're asking seriously instead of just dismissing it as common complaints. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
David Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. My wife and I moved here in January of 2022. The only problem is, is we didn't get no abatement from y'all or the county for moving here. We didn't get no breaks or anything. Don't make no sense to me. So my question is, and just let you know that I'm not some long-haired hippie riding a motorcycle. I am state president for a motorcycle organization that is motorcycle rights, education, and safety. I understand budgeting. I understand expenses. I have to do this every year. I have thirteen chapters in this state with almost a thousand members. I have to go with them and understand what they are asking us to do and set a budget to accommodate our thirteen chapters, also with our legislative agenda in Atlanta each year and our lobbyists. So I'm not really not uneducated on this part. My question is, last year, my previous year fair market value is eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, or thirty-seven. Current year fair market value comes out thirty-one thousand dollars more than what last year was at one nineteen, seven hundred and ten dollars. Okay? Big increase. I'm a Vietnam-era vet, I'm a limited income, I'm retired, I'm partially disabled. Now, with this increase, I'm sitting here asking myself, okay, do I eat? Or do I take money and make sure I've got it to be able to get to the doctor, to get to the VA clinic in Savannah? Or if I have to go to Charleston, will I be able to get there? Understand, yeah, they do reimburse you for travel, but they don't give you money before you go to be able to see your doctors. I was diagnosed with a rare disorder last year. My wife had to call an ambulance. Forty minutes later, I'm still laying there, high fever, delirious, didn't know what was going on. My wife put me in her car, in a truck, and took me to Memorial Hospital. You know what the doctor told her in the emergency room when I got there? Another hour, less than two hours, he wouldn't be laying in this bed. My pulse was fifty-eight, my heart rate was seventy, sixty-two. My blood pressure was seventy over forty. Yeah, I was almost dead. Luckily, I pulled out of this. Now, as far as services go, y'all wanting to increase our taxes, but on the end of Bullock County that I live on, we, if you want to call what we get out there service, it's a joke. I live on Eldor Road, right there at the entrance to River Bluff, whatever they want to call it. Call it Junk House City. Because if you see how some of that stuff's being built, you wouldn't even want to live in it. I wouldn't even let my dog live in it. We get, people come out there, once in a great while, to mow the side of the roads. And when they get done, it looks worse when they get done than before they got started. Pay for all over the place, everything. I go out there, I clean up the front of my property. I mow it, I pick up the trash. Once in a great while, we'll get a road scraper to come in behind us and do Martin Swenson Road. We have no police officers out there patrolling that area. And I'm going to tell you right now, you don't have to go to Indianapolis to see the Five Hundred, just go sit on Eldor Road about four to six in the afternoon and watch them fools coming down through there at seventy, eighty mile an hour passing cars and stuff. This is ridiculous, man. I don't know if we're going to be, well, we moved here because we wanted a better way of life. We wanted a country environment. My wife was raised in Bullock County. She's part of the Smith clan. They have the Smiths reunion hall over on the Seateck Road. And, you know, we come up here to get out of the bustle and stuff. All this abatement that y'all are giving these big corporations don't mean nothing to them. And I'm going to tell you something. My daughter works for, she's a nurse and works for a doctor, who is a foreign doctor. I won't drag nobody's name. They were having a talk. Is it that worse to her is, we don't care about y'all's feeling, all we care about is your money. That's all I have to say.
Is that Mr. and Mrs. John Lewis on Nicole Avenue? No? Well, that is it for our.
All right, I will now ask for a motion to close the floor to the public comments.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Senator. We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? The public hearing is now closed. And next on the agenda would be the, any staff have any comments for tonight?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman, except I will say that I've taken some time to chronicle many of the major comments and recurring things. And hopefully, it's something we can use to provide some information and answer some questions after the meeting.
Any other staff member? Commissioners comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say one thing on all this. We do appreciate everybody coming out. You know, this has not been easy for us. You know, we taxing ourselves too. A lot of, have a lot of things, just like everyone here does. And it's been pretty tough. A grind on all of us, and like I said, these gentlemen here have been working on it longer than I have. But they put me in the hot seat time we got sworn in, and they've helped me all the way through this thing. And like I said, it's not been easy for either one, anybody on this board, and I've watched these men work hard at it. The, I don't really have, I'm not going to go in real detail about anything. The school resource officer is kind of pretty close to my heart about some of that stuff, probably because I have kids in elementary school right now. I can't explain why we paying some of it. But I know that our kids will be protected at all costs, along with our senior citizens. But our children will be protected. And this whole panel of people up here, they going to see to it. So that's one cost I really can't give you a sure enough definite, Mr. Emily, I know you brought it up, and I can't give you a definite answer on. But right now, that's not really a concern to me because we got somebody in place right now. And there's some bad things happening in this world. The concern, the concern was where the money was at. That's where it was split.
Mr. Emily, you can come back at the next meeting, this is Commissioner comment.
Or I can, I can explain it to Mr. Emily or others after the meeting if they're willing.
And I didn't mean to stir up nothing, but like I said, our children will be safe. Our senior citizens, we're not, you're not falling on deaf ears, we understand. We do. I have a great-grandma and a mom and daddy, they're all over sixty, grandma's ninety-four. I understand, we do. But these gentlemen right here have worked very, very diligently at it. I'm telling y'all, it's not, it's not been a very easy decision on any of our parts. But I do appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I do, it did not fall on deaf ears.
Any other comments? And I think we all appreciate you coming out. I mean, you know, it's a tough decision. One thing that I did hear is about school resource officer. The school pays for the time that the resource officer is at their school. The county pick, then they go to work for the county. And that's the way that's split up. Right, Chair? So it's sort of a half and half situation. You know, I'm one of those senior citizens too that folks referred to. And it's astounding to hear, I've been here now for eighteen and a half years. I think the first fire truck that we purchased was around eighty-six thousand dollars. We ordered one the other day, you know how much it is? Two years before we can get it, it's five hundred and sixty-something thousand dollars, I believe. It's tough. Now, we had said that after, we heard y'all, that, of course, we would close it out, and I know the sheriff and some others will be here to answer any questions that y'all might would have. I think he would concur about the resource officer that I just made mention about. I don't, gosh. We've got two more of these, we welcome y'all back. You can sign up again, you can speak again if you'd like to. I mean, this is your meeting, the next two, the third one, then we'll make a decision on what we can do.
Mr. Chairman, could I address just a couple of high-level things?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Again, I've tried to chronicle this, and I was going to try to save it, but I wanted to capture the moment for as many of you are as here as possible. But just a few high-level things, going back to the beginning of the meeting. Well, the public didn't know. I would say that's an inaccurate statement because I went on the record myself last year in June of 2022. I think Mr. Happel can attest to this because he interviewed me. I said that a property tax increase was going to be inevitable this year. I was almost afraid that it was going to be much more than it is, even though what it is is not pretty at all. But to say that you didn't know or that it was an ambush, it's not one hundred percent true. But I can't deny that the magnitude of it was a surprise. There's no, there's no getting around that. You know, as far as the tax policy issues go, such as senior exemptions or freezes or other things we can do, you know, I don't think the Commissioners would categorically dismiss looking into those things. But to address Mr. Simons, we would have to figure out what the citizens want. Do you just want some type of senior exemption or tax break? Or an assessment freeze or both? I mean, like I say, everything's, anything that we do, it's going to be a process and take time. And there's going to be some collateral damage to other taxpayers who could end up paying a little bit more. But if that's the policy of the Board of Commissioners, that's fine. Abatements. I can absolutely not defend abatements wholeheartedly. I can sit here and tell you that there are other indirect business and revenue benefits that it may provide. But the reality is, is that the Development Authority in Bullock County can act independently of the County Commission and provide these abatements or tax incentives. Yes, you will say, and it is true, that the Commission effectively signs off on intergovernmental agreements and memorandum of understanding, but it's more of a communication tool. The DABC can set the policy and the rhythm and the amount of these abatements without our consent. If you want, if you want to look at how much worse it can be, I give you the Development Authority of Fulton County. Read about that any day of the week. Now, if you think we got a dumpster fire down here, there's a landfill fire up there. Raising other funds, I think Mr. Fatika mentioned it, and some others. Impact fees, I think we're open to looking at that, and I don't, I don't know that we would pass it or not because it's not the end-all, catch-all of trying to pay for capital expenses. A lot of the things that were mentioned by Mr. Reed and Mr. Fatika, we can probably get some kind of support, outside support, or we, or float a bond for capital items. But the state is not going to come in and help us with our operations and maintenance budget, which comes out of the general fund. And unlike other wealthier counties, or even like cities, the city of Statesboro, Columbia County with their water and sewer and their fiber utility, when you have these utilities and they're mature enough, you have the opportunity as a local government to make millions of dollars of transfers into your general fund to subsidize your tax rate and keep it artificially low. If the city of Statesboro didn't make those transfers, which I don't have the information at hand, but I know it's in excess of three million dollars, they would probably have to charge four more mills of property tax. And that's just. And that's just a fact. We can't, we, we don't have a revenue stream that supports that kind of subsidy, nor do we have those utilities, mature utilities at this time. I think the SRO has been explained, and I'll use quickly Mr. Emily's description of essential services. When I came here almost twenty years ago, was there slack in the organization? I would probably say back then, yes. But ever since the Great Recession, uh, recession and coming through now and in communicating with all of the elected offices and all of the departments under the Board of Commissioners and everything, uh, in every outside agency, everybody will tell you that we operate a core services local government. We don't do anything very fancy. We do have aging facilities. Hopefully, not many of you had to go to court for a bad reason, but if you have, you've had to, to endure it in a very cramped area. How many people have been to, uh, to, to the jury assembly room or called for jury duty? Now, that's a cattle call, isn't it? It's very uncomfortable. And we don't, we don't pay the jurors as much as many, many counties do, and there are a lot of these small nuances. But I'll finish with this, and I think the last thing I want to address without, without getting too deep, is, um, the employee raises. Now, it must be remembered, and it may not be well-known, that during the pandemic, and because we did not know what the impact of the pandemic was going to be, no raises were given out. And what that has done is that it has made our compensation plan fall behind. So again, we've been trying to catch up, not only for retention, but for recruitment. Presently, right now, we have a seven percent employee vacancy rate in Bullock County. Now, depending upon your point of view, that sounds high or it sounds low, but in HR nomenclature, three to five percent is much more ideal. Seven percent isn't hitting the danger zone, but if we go in excess of seven, seven percent, then we have a serious problem delivering services wherever they come from. So the eight percent increase wa, was not done in vain. It was done to compensate for a period of time where we were unable to give raises at all. So all things being equal, and I've only hit on a few of the points that all of you have brought up. You know, there, there's no perfect solution to this thing, but I do believe that the commissioners, myself, the staff, and the elected officials who are present, particularly the sheriff, are listening to you and are sympathetic and, and empathize with your concerns. I'm particularly empathetic of senior citizens who are on legitimate fixed incomes. I am sympathetic to youths who are having to come together and, whether it be with their parents or with their friends, cobble together enough money to buy land and put a camper on it. It's not believe it to Beaver, Beaver American Dream, but I applaud them for, for their wherewithal to try to invest in something that is sacred traditionally in our coun, country, the, the American dream. You know, I'm sympathetic to landowners, or I'm sorry landlords, uh, who have to ra, raise their rents if they are legitimately taking care of their property and providing adequate housing. If you're doing it the right way, the tax, a tax increase is going to pinch you. If you're a slumlord, then you're just a slumlord. But at the end of the day, I really believe that, um, while I understand your sentiment, and I did, I do think I heard that nobody wants to diminish or denigrate what's needed in public safety. But to Mr. Harris's point, deferring the purchase of a few light bulbs or a few things like that aren't, aren't going to do it. We have, we have a professional purchasing function where we save ourselves hundreds and thousands of dollars a year by structured competitive bidding. But with the examples I gave earlier, it's hard for us to beat inflation too. And we don't buy more light bulbs than we need. We don't buy more vehicles than we need. We're a very core services county. If we were that wealthy, we would have the wonderful campus that Columbia County government has up in Evans. Boy, it's like a college campus. They've got everything. It's beautiful. I'm sorry? Yeah, but you have more people to spread it around with. I won't. We, I would be glad to sit with you and discuss that when, uh, aside from the meeting, when there's more time. But the point is, is that I do, I do believe that this was a well-thought-out budget. Regardless of what the decision is, if the decision is to lower the, the tax rate further, then in, in the same vein, the commissioners will also have to think about what measures they would take to cut the budget. And the reality is, it would have to be people. You either do a hiring freeze, you maybe do furlough, furloughs or layoffs, although I don't think, I think that would be a little bit too draconian. But the reality is, is that the budget has been passed. Raises have been instituted as of July first. So the only place really to go to would be to use, to apply a higher, uh, apply a hiring fee, freeze, or to use reserves, which may threaten cash flow and creditworthiness and other factors. But I just wanted to hit those high points, and I'll yield the floor back to the chair.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I do have, I do have one that I'd like to say, and it's just something that's been going on tonight through the room. Oh, because there couldn't be no more of us there, then me and, me and Commissioner Deal sat with County Manager Couch, Assistant Manager Steinman, and, and Ms. King until waking moment to come in here earlier, because, I mean, you can't have over so many elected officials. And it's been stated, well, we knew about it since September. I do want to clarify that. We didn't know about anything in September. We started having our budget retreats in September. And unless there's somebody in this room that knows more about it than I do, and hadn't told me yet, they hadn't been any decisions made, because when I was in Ms. King's office a while ago, I was looking at one point seven five million. Now, we was down to one point five before I left there a while ago. And now, there's been several people stood up here tonight and said, well, like we've done, made our decision. And unless somebody can enlighten me when I leave tonight, y'all tell me how I've made my mind up, I'll be glad to let you talk to me. But we have not made our decision up, and we have not known since September. We have been working on this thing since September, and we are still working on it. We got two more meetings to go through, so, and there's a lot of people say, oh, they done made their mind up. Well, they might be five up here made their mind up, but I know they ain't six made it up. So that, I just wanted to clarify that for people. We hear you, I understand, I'm just like all of y'all, I own property here. I'm taxing, this thing's going to cost me a pretty good chunk. I got a mama that's eighty-eight. I under, I understand, we understand as a commission. We have families here too. We own property here. I can probably fit into just about, other than being on some kind of, somebody give, you know, I get a check of them, I don't, but other than that, I can fit in just about any other case scenario y'all put in here tonight, whether it's whatever it, it is. I mean, I farm in everything, rent, I mean, I understand completely, but I did want to clarify that. We, we didn't know in September. It's not like that we pulling a shenanigan and we was going to, and it, and it really upsets me, and Mr. Spence, I did want to say something about the deep, Bullock County Development Authority, Mr. Couch used the, the abbreviation of it a while ago. Me and him had talked, I wanted to clarify that. But, uh, other than that, we do understand. We understand completely. And, and that's all I wanted to say. Other than that, the floor is closed, and I'll, I'll talk to you if you want to talk. Thank you.
All right. Any other commissioners? Hearing none, then do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of closing this meeting, show of hands. Approve, well, this meeting is now closed, and thank y'all for coming.